All right, seven o'clock, calling this meeting of the Predoni Village Board to order Thursday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Our first item is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clark Johnson, will you please take the role?
President Lenz.
Here.
Trustee Eibert.
Yeah.
Trustee Frank.
Yeah.
Trustee Abeglin.
Yeah.
Trustee Doorward.
Yeah.
Trustee Searing.
Here.
Trustee Van Roen.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Reminder that public comments are limited to five minutes per person. All right, we will be moving on to the next item, the consent agenda. Approving the minutes of the August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five Village Board of Trustees meeting and approving the general fund, water, and sewer invoices.
We're going to approve consent agenda.
And I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All abstaining? Passes. Items for action and or discussion. First item is discussion or possible action on potential update to the village's home occupation ordinance sponsored by trustee Van Re. Trustee Van Roen.
Well, I want to start with this. There was one or two updates from our last discussion. One of them being a employee limit for a, you know, a business in the home, home, excuse me, home occupation business. One thing that hasn't been added yet is those hours of operation that we talked about that might be helpful to make sure there's no disruptions early morning, late, late at night. But I will say, when we look at our strategic priorities, number five is strong sense of community. I think we owe it to people. You'll have some charity, give people the benefit of the doubt. You know, other people that might push the boundaries, yes, but I think we owe it to, you know, village residents to get something out there that's gonna, again, you know, give them some opportunity, and if it's not perfect, that's okay. It has to go to the next step. Anyway, they would look at it, add, change things. But I think we should at least try to get something set in stone to pass forward. I'll leave it at that.
All right. Discussion, comments?
I think in most of these, in most of these, even though they're referring to the negative home occupation, they're dealing with and disguising, disguising a home business. Now, it's, if you can picture that, there's a heck of a lot of difference between a home business and a homework occupation. Some of these, like, you can't have more than fifty employees, and you have can't have more than half the front yard with storage and things. Whereas an occupation is not going to have those kind of things. So it's, as once again, we go back to the the endeavor to create something that's not there. There are so many things, we're writing language that we want to apply to businesses that aren't here. While we're afraid of writing languages in a business that is here and is being thrown out. So it's, it's, it's kind of defeating the whole purpose.
Not quite following. You can kind of call it whatever you want, business or occupation, but what, 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 what purpose are we defeating?
Well, there's all of these, all of these things that limit the number of employees, which you're not going to have in a home occupation. You're going to have a guy tinkering in the basement ninety times out of one out of a hundred. And where was the other ones, fifteen? They're talking about using separate quarters, like additional quarters. You're, they're talking about fifty percent of the front yard, that's number six. Occupants shall be able to conduct retail sales. Now, that's not an occasion, that's not a, a home occupation either. Retail sales, that's a business. Off this, a lot of this is describing a business. You could probably find something that would correlate to everything in your, in our normal in our normal quota ordinances. The basic first, the basic idea that we were looking at first far as a, a lot closer to Grafton, where you have the right by owning a piece of property. But that scares all the bureaucracy, all the bureaucrats. They have it, right? There's nothing for me to govern. There's nothing for me to say, well, this is too long, this is too short, and it's too loud or whatever. I have to have stuff to govern. Well, do you know, I just have to have things to govern.
I think the point of it is to have it pretty hands-off for that reason. Because we don't want to have a lot of red tape and a lot of strict policies for what you can and can't do. It's, it's pretty hands-off for any use for that reason. And you distinguishing a business or occupation, it's, it's just what you call it, semantics, whatever you choose to do. You know, but the, the point of it is exactly what we're doing is the opportunity. You know, so, so I don't have to go pay double rent to open a place in town and do this or that when I can do it right here, as long as I'm following these simple rules. That, that's what we're trying to get at, so. It just gets too, I mean, you're never going to win if you're trying to get down to the nitty-gritty details, or we need regulations for this and that. You know, let, let's just take a hands-off approach. Again, build a strong sense of community, give people the benefit of the doubt, give them charity, give them opportunity, and not have all these, you know, these strict guidelines for them to, to have a chance to operate. That's the point of this.
Yeah, a chance to operate. There's no sense setting up a bunch of rules and regulations and stuff to prevent them from operating to begin with.
Yeah, I think the purpose of this is to allow these, these home-based businesses to exist while still having a little bit of some sort of regulation on them so they don't become a nuisance. That's how I see this. We are, even without this, we already have home-based businesses going on. You know, you have your eBay sales, you have your lawnmower repairs, you have your Mary Kay and such. It's already happening, so we might as well have something on the books in case it does become some sort of nuisance to the neighbors. You know, somebody operating their saw at two in the morning is obviously not going to be a good idea, so therefore, you know, the hours of operation should be congruent with our, our quiet hours. Which brings me to the next point. I'll admit, I didn't do all of the homework that I expected the sponsor, maybe our administration, has. Is, does this cover, does, is this congruent with a standard business? And any governance that we, that we have over any standard business in the village? Or is that, is there a congruency there? So people aren't going to skirt those rules by having a home-based, the, the, home-based visit, business rather than a, you know, separate brick and mortar?
Like, you'd probably be better off answering the nitty-gritty little details like that.
Well, and I explained this at the last meeting, that right now our ordinance allows, in a sense, this home occupation, except the definition is really limited and outdated. We talked about that. And it allows it through a zoning permit. But the zoning permit is pretty strict, too. It allows it in certain scenarios, if it matches the home occupation business. And if it doesn't, it might be a conditional use permit, or it might just be, again, a conditional or a zoning permit that's conditional on the zoning administrator's approval, which, again, you can give us that authority or not, but there should still be some sort of guidelines for what that is, and that's the part that we're missing. I think we're all in agreement that we need to clean up the household occupation definition. But there should be some sort of, this is what's allowed in that, so in that nightmare scenario, if things go awry, then we have something to enforce. Because if you don't give us a framework, which I respect, you know, some, some may not want to do, we have no legal teeth then to go after it.
And I think that's what I said last time. I won't afford doing this. We need to have some sort of structure and restrictions so that when I decide that the next door neighbor is doing a business and I've got a hundred people coming in and out of my house, or my neighbor's house, and they could potentially be repeat people, and they could see my son coming home and staying home for two hours after school, you know, just from a safety factor from our residents as well. You know, that we need to have something that we can have restrictions on, and for the concern of our residents as well. Because I was thinking about this actually on my way home. Do I want these home-based businesses not necessarily, they won't necessarily do background checks on their employees? Like, I work for a company that does a background check on everybody. I know most people have worked for a company that do background checks. And home-based businesses don't necessarily have to do that, from what I understand.
Well, yeah, if you, you know, if you have unrestricted customer traffic, delivery traffic, there wouldn't be a very, there wouldn't be those kind of controls. And even in your, you know, to your point, if businesses have to make conditional use permits, they may have restrictions in your, in business zone areas, they may have restrictions on the conditional use may place restrictions on deliveries and things like that, but but then if you're running your own business, you would have no restrictions. And that doesn't seem totally fair. But I, I would, I would sort of stress to the board the same kind of concerns that are being raised that people that are, and I'd also be concerned that are people in a, in a residential area, you know, I appreciate less restriction, but I think people might have certain expectations. And outdoor displays and signage and deliveries, customers who's might not to some people. So there might be deep restrictions that are restricted in some places, but others, it just might be restricted. We're not, it'd be, you know, and I know you're going to vet this, you would vet this at a, at a public hearing, and you'd hear from the residents, but that'd be like, my concern, if we result in half the lot of outdoor display. I don't know how the residents would react to something like that.
You say we hear from the residents at a public hearing. In the seven and a half years I've been doing this, my experience is that I usually would hear from the residents after.
Yes, it'll be the moment the business opens, when you had no one that probably heard it.
And they'd be like, oh, you didn't know this was I didn't get a chance to say anything, well.
And I know what, what is upsetting to me is me not you know.
So if this stuff is already going on, apparently, if we have a lot of stuff going on already that we don't know about, if we have all these different, you know, limits on X, Y, and Z, and then at the bottom, number fifteen, compliance with all their ordinance still apply. So like, I don't know what is and what isn't covered by what we have here, but again, it's, that's the point, is we don't need to have all these, you know, all these, you know, strict guidelines and this and that. Again, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to give people opportunity, and there's no perfect world where you're going to have everything how you want it, in that, if that makes sense. So you're, you're, you're taking a small risk, but again, that's building that trust of the community. And you're, you're giving charity people, say, hey, you have the opportunity. If there's an issue, it'll be reviewed. And again, if there isn't something set in stone, well, that's where, you know, I don't know if you'd call it press, precedent can be set, but if it's open interpretation through the, is it the planning commission? That's where the, the gray areas would be hashed out, so.
Trustee Searing, so you want to do something?
I read through what Shane had drafted very closely, and I understand the need for allowing residents to start business opportunities out of their homes, because no one can necessarily go buy a building and then start it. So when you're one or two people, a family, trying to start out some side business, then I am fully in agreement that we need to have some opportunity to. I looked at this one closely. I looked at the one Grafton has very closely from what they sent to us. I would recommend if we wanted to try going in a direction with this, we should just take what Grafton has already written and provide that to our attorney to see what we think. Obviously, Grafton sent that through a system. It works for them, and it also allows residents to run some business out of their home or home occupation, as well as keep some restrictions so we can possibly stop anything that's confrontational to neighbors.
Do you know, too, if there was a lot of huge differences? Because I think this is pretty much a copy paste with some slight edits.
Like, change the six employees, so like, I wouldn't recommend six employees out of a home occupation, just like, that's non-residents. I mean, if, if you have you and your five kids working for you, because in Grafton's it does say one other employee besides a resident, so if, you know, if my four kids were working with me on a home business, that would be still anyone in the residence. I believe their square footage was different, it was twenty-five percent. So the, there's a restriction, Grafton doesn't allow home sales, so they wouldn't allow you to set up a retail space. I feel like if a person start, needs to start setting up a retail base, where they're going to start running retail out of their business, they should probably get something go-uprun. I don't think we should be running retail stores out of a home. Because I guess what would stop me then from potentially applying for a liquor license and running a bar out of my basement? Or a car lot, so I think it said in Grafton's, it allows pickups of things people have purchased online to come to the resident and do pickups, but it doesn't allow them to set up a retail place and have everyday shoppers come into them. I, I think it's a great thing to do for residents, and I think what Grafton already had was a great starting point, and if there was issues, then residents could come voice them, like you said. And at least it would give residents an opportunity to start a home business the permit process, because Grafton's is open and they don't require a permit.
I'd like to see how Grafton rose that without having any problems.
Well, I think during the last meeting, it was stated that if they have problems, they would get the complaint and then they would check on it, but then they would add that very
A framework.
That framework to use to check on those complaints, to verify that somebody is within that framework of running their own occupation.
Because then we don't have to come up with all the one ifs.
And it doesn't sound like they have a lot of problems.
No, we shouldn't, we don't have to come up with all the, the whatevs in advance.
I believe in that.
That's the thing that kills the use in advance. You're never going to, you're never going to come up with all the one ifs in advance.
And, and I don't like the crackdown, like, specific things like, oh, everything's good besides retail, or, you know, pick anything else, but the other thing, too, is if there is an issue that arises, well, this is something you could always come back to and modify after the fact, could you not? Like, if we decide to change it, that's going to be abiding if.
If we change, if we change it after the fact, though, that could be problematic. Would they be grandfathered in? If they say, you know, traffic, there's no restrictions on customer, client, or commercial traffic, so therefore, you can't complain about that.
Okay, we grandfather them if we don't know they're exist.
If, if they're following the rules as written, when we discover that they've got the business, or when there's a complaint, they're following the rules as written at the time. They can't be held accountable to rules that are written afterward.
Where are we supposed to begin with?
But als, but also, too, if there is no guideline for this or that, then we say, hey, this is an issue, we want to change this or add this specific thing into it. That's, they would have to comply with our rules, correct? So.
Would they?
I don't know how it works if they were, if they were established before we made the rule.
Because it's like.
All that grandfather.
Yeah.
Would they be able to consult with a lawyer and take it to court? I mean,
naturally.
We don't have a guideline, a framework that we can fall back on and say, well, you know, we understand, we, you know, we got the complaint that there's just too much traffic. Our guidelines say that you can't have that much traffic. They have a specific, we have a specific outline of what you can have going on. That is defensible. If somebody complains and their lawyer says, there's no restriction, they can come in day and night, they can have cars lined up down the block. And I, I know I'm exaggerating, all right? I know I'm exaggerating, but the point is, without a solid framework, a structural framework, that we have to say, okay, you can do what you want, but when the complaints come in, if you're violating some of these guidelines, these rules, you need to fix it or you need to stop.
You need to write them down first before they're ruled to be violated.
To be, I'm reviewing Grafton's, I agree with trustee Siri. This is open-ended enough that we allow the people to have these businesses, but that also gives us enough structure to fall back on. So I kind of agree with what trustee Siri.
And what, what were the specific few things that Grafton has that we're missing, essentially?
Twenty-five percent, it's no retail. And no more than one employee outside of family members who actually live in there. The sale and display of commodities, no goods or commodity or goods will be displayed through the exterior of the process. Traffic, no vehicular pedestrian traffic shall be generated by such home occupation or home office in greater volume than would normally be expected for principal use. Levels of noise, yeah.
But see, some of that, too, I, I like, you, you're, you're really handicapping people for them to say you can't have extra traffic. Like, we're, we're just basically killing them.
It says normal levels, and then, and it follows the trip generation code, which if you go online and you actually look up this Wisconsin trip generation code, right now, residents in the Ozaki County area, I think it was like thirty-five vehicles a day. I mean, that's a lot of people coming into our house per day. I mean, thirty-five. So like, I don't think this is necessarily really restricting them. It's just following a code where if we start seeing too much traffic, we have something to stand on when we go talk to the resident and say, hey, this is, this is getting excessive now. Your neighbors are complaining.
So if we have that, too, then why do we need to crack down on retail if there's already a restriction on how many people are coming and going? And also, for example, one employee, well, that gives you no wiggle room. If you and a few buddies want to do something and chip away at it part-time together, you know, that's one, one employee is going to give you hardly any help. So there's, there's, there's a little bit of both on both sides.
Shall be employed or unemployed at one time other than the person's resident in the house. So yeah, you could have multiple buddies doing it, and only one person is officially an employee coming in and out. So you could have, but for people, one is a homeowner, and then I mean, there are ways of people getting around this, but.
Yeah, but if Tom, Dick, and Harry all wanted to work on the projects after work one night, they wouldn't be able to on that. So I think one might be a little too restrictive, but I think there should be a limit.
So what I, what, what I would say, too, is if you really like that, well, it's pretty much the same as what we have, minus a few things. All, if all you did was switch the traffic from no traffic restrictions to insert that traffic paragraph.
Again, it's the maximum floor area footage of twenty-five percent of your home, so.
Can we, can we enforce that without having it in our ordinance, if it's statutory?
Is what's, is what's statutory. There, there, there would be a branch to the graphic. I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, the graphic code would not be enforceable here.
Well, if we put, if, if we made a code for the village that basically was a carbon copy of the Grafton code, if we enacted that here.
So, and I think your point is well made. If your code says unlimited, you know, deliveries, and then people come in and say, my neighbor has a box truck, you know, with a refrigerator truck coming in at six o'clock at night delivering things, and it bothers us. Well, to your point, the code says unlimited deliveries. So I think you'd be hard pressed to find that because it'd be a nuisance.
Yes, the question, how long has Grafton had this ordinance? And then the other question would be, what was the need for this order? Was there a problem that they had to form this? And why, and then why are we basically copying?
Well, we had an issue come up in the village with somebody who's doing work outside of the house, but on his property, that violated. It wasn't inside their house, but it violated our conditional use and it violated the, the home occupation rules that we have. We have, as a board, decided that what we want to do is try to refine, you know, get our ordinances up to date, because our ordinances are out of date, and a little bit more clear-cut. So what trustee Van Roen did was take a look at several other communities in the area, excuse me, and the way they do this kind of thing. And Grafton is one of those, which has an open use policy. It's your property, you can do what you want until somebody complains about it. But when somebody complains about it, we've got guidelines on how things should be done. Other communities have more strict policies where you have to, you have to apply, you have to get permission and so forth. And this policy appealed more to trustee Van Roen than one of the more restrictive policies. I don't know that off the top of my head. I do not. Well, in, in the, in the communications that were shared with us, they have not had any problems that forced them to shut somebody down. So, you know, I'm sure they've had complaints, but they've not had anything that forced them to shut anybody down. So it's working for them, whatever, you know, it's doing for them, it's working.
So there was a meeting here going, because there was a guy working in the business here that was had quite a bit of traffic and
There was a name here because the person that occasionally made a few pieces on his
CNC machine.
Yeah, and his CNC, to prove a, a piece, you know, whenever he made pieces.
He was building prototypes on a CNC machine.
He couldn't, he couldn't, because it was termed machining. Making those five pieces every month or so, something like that was termed machining. Well, it is actually, but it's not. It's more, it's, it's part development is more what a draftsman would do, it's more CDC.
Running a beauty factory.
It's a part, it's a part of the process that proves your picture on the paper or your screen. Now, can we do this on the machine? So he just machines open whatever, and sees if he can do it. Look, he's okay. Nick might sit out and doing, all right, this is supposed to be, sends it to the, to the factory, let them check it to see if they want to run a few more or whatever.
The problem was in this situation was that he was machining on a residential property. And that is not covered by our current.
The difference is, it's only a machining on government property, property because it's in somebody else's.
Well, it sounds like he was machining for profit.
Yeah.
So he was making a business. He wasn't doing it for fun. He was doing it to prove prototypes for another facility. And he was getting paid for that, so he was running the business. I mean, how you look at it, it's not for fun, and what he was making.
Yes, and he lives, he lives up on eight hundred Predoni Avenue, and his garage, which he can't use for anything like that. If you increase the electricity, which is another thing that came from Grafton, that gets stuck in our ordinance. If you change the utilities, alter them, then you can't, you know, it's a business, it's not, not Single. And then, um, he's about. Well, three or four feet away from the rest of the houses on either side. The back of his house. Faces of ravine. Where there's nobody that can live, it's, he's down the ravine and, you know, whatever. Um, well, he never had any problems and never had any complaints or anything, but he wanted to do the right thing. He wanted to get a permit. So he came here. And he went through the process. And was turned down and now he can't run his occupation anymore. Because he asked if. He wanted to do the right thing. He wanted to have a piece of paper.
So that's what sparked it. But the point of this was to again, really give people an opportunity to be attractive as a community for. You know, younger people that might wanna stay, people that are looking for a place to come. Yeah, it really opens up the opportunity financially for people to have flexibility. And to have that, that opportunity to, you know, to do well, to have some extra income to, to start something. Um, and obviously with the restrictions. You know, you can't run a full. Operation of full, you know, you're not gonna be doing a warehouse and a. You know, manufacturing thing out of your little, you know, besides a little project in your shed or whatever, but. The, the point of this is, is to really open it up to give people opportunity. I, I guess for, for you guys. You know, if we, if we do add an hours of operation, if we do add that traffic language, is this something that's a good rough draft? A good solid draft to send for people to look at. Cause that's not a proven anything. It's saying, hey, here's a decent draft. It might, might be some small kinks. Let's see what these guys think. They would send it back to us. We would take a look at it again. If we don't like it. Then I'm sure it starts the process again where we send it back with the changes they sent about, right?
Minister Jenkins?
So I was gonna say, I believe that's kinda what trustee Siri was getting at is to use the Grafton as a, as a base. That's what I've heard, at least for the majority of you. Let's start with that. Send that version to plan commission. They might tweak it. They might address the same things about the number of employees might be too strict. We wanna change hours, whatever, right? They'll give you that feedback and it's gonna end up right back before you all as well to make those additional tweaks if you want.
Did you use the word might?
What's that?
Did you were to use, but use the word, they might send it back to me.
What do you mean? They might, they might send it back to you with tweaks.
They might send it back to me and it would be the same thing and I'd have to turn it down or whatever. See, you're making decisions. For the board that makes decisions.
Nope, I said that the plan commission might make tweaks that where they send it back.
You said might again.
Yep, the plan commission. Yep.
We would decide as soon as the planning commission, they would review it. They would make any suggestions. Or changes and then it would come back here. After the planning commission viewed it.
And if we didn't like it, would it just repeat? We would. Update it again, send it back.
It, it's up to you all, though, because it's in our zoning chapter. They have a chance at it, right?
Yeah.
Um, but then after that, I mean, it's yours to do what you wish.
So to the point of the one employee, I don't. There's not gonna be a permit required. So. Again, if your neighbors don't complain about you and two of your buddies working in your garage at five o'clock at night. No one's gonna know that you and two of your buddies work in your garage, cause there's no permit. So I think. The one employee really shouldn't become a problem. Because unless your neighbors start complaining because you have five or six of the buddies now in the garage working with you. Then, but then at that point, maybe you and your buddy should invest in a building. And start trying to start your business out of a building and grow your business, not just keep working out of your garage.
So my question before we would agree to send just the, the Grafton copy is. There, there's also issues, I think, on the Grafton copy. So it's like, can we just cheek tweak and add the, the one that we have versus going backwards? I mean, we're. Again, this one's cutting in half what the, the space you can use in your place. It's also cutting out things like retail, okay? We don't. We shouldn't put such hard restrictions on people. We gotta take the leash off. Give people the opportunity.
But again, without a permit. These restrictions are just telling people, we have something for you to try to follow. And if no one complains, you can run retail and you can turn fifty percent of your house into a business if you want.
Yeah, now, now my neighbor that doesn't like me and has a bone to pick with me. Complaints for no reason. Gets a couple neighbors that.
Well, he wouldn't have no reason because he wouldn't be following the code. Right?
If, if I could just add to that is that, that's, that's the only thing I can see the problem is what he had. Is it, the one employee does seem restrictive. And if. I'm pissed off at my neighbor, I can see he's violating this, sorry. What, what regrets me from just cause I don't like you, I'm making a complaint. That's where I think you should give the business a little.
But you have to know that them employees are on his payroll, right? So if I'm running a business out of my house and I have two buddies that are helping me.
Yeah.
If all of a sudden they show up and say, hey, these guys are working for you. No, they're just buddies helping me out. If I'm not paying them, they're not working for me, right? There's, they're helping me. So there's a lot of proof needed to actually adhere to that.
Think we're, we're really getting into a lot of details here. I think we, we need to come to a decision tonight, what we wanna do. Do we want to? Send this back to the drawing room for a little more tweaking? Do we want to send? Trustee Van Rue's. Idea, but hi- his draft to the planning commission? Do we wanna send the Grafton item to the planning commission? How do we wanna handle this? Because we, we can go around all night about hypotheticals and we're gonna be here until eleven or twelve, so.
And Grafton did that a few years ago. What did we do with parking? We gave it to planning commission, say you handle it?
I'm in agreement with trustee Siri. I think the Grafton won't go to the planning commission. And I'm not sure what everybody else thinks.
I'd be, I'd be open to using the Grafton as a base and if trustee Van Rue wants to. Make some tweaks prior to heading, sending to the planning commission now. Such as the employee restrictions or the space restrictions. Uh. Swing, swing the bat and see, see what's in their mess, but uh. In the end, it's gonna come back to us to improve it.
And I mean, if you take the Grafton one and you make some edits to it and you send that to the planning commission. You're able to put your stamp on it and make some of the adjustments that you think it should have, that it's missing. And then the planning commission can take a look at that.
So I think trustee Siri did do that. That's, that's the version that you have before you was his, you know. Swing it, swing it a mess, so to speak, um, trying to doctor up that ordinance. So yeah, I think at this point you need to choose, right? Do you wanna continue with the drafts that he has? Or do you wanna change it up and start with the new base and just edit that one?
So, I think the big part of my point was that it's gonna come back to us, so.
Yeah.
Therefore, it would be. And this is advice from someone who's. Been around block once or twice. It'd be. Advisable to have something in place that is likely to get. Passed by a majority of, of people sitting here. And right now, I don't think you're there.
Good, you're.
You're close.
Yeah, yeah, both, both have their issues, but I guess it doesn't really matter at this point which one you send. It's more of the point of getting something to them. Um, both are. Better than what we have now. Uh. I don't know if we wanna send some specific comments with that copy as well. But.
You wanna pick two or send them both?
Could you send them both to look at them?
Well, at this point, we're at the step of like legal review and stuff like that and. But I, I mean, what I've heard so far is we like Grafton for the most part, except for the amount of employees. So I can have them draw attention to that. To, to, um. To find out what's a, maybe a better number for that. Are there any other points of the Grafton version that you? You feel like a majority of you want to tweak?
I just wanna ask. Because again, it has certain restrictions like, was it retail and whatever else? About that, why we have to single out a certain app, a certain, um. Niche in, in the realm of possibilities for people here. Um, and also that question about can you? You know, if we decide there's an issue, can we? What, what is legality of changing or updating something after the fact? Oh, this is an issue. We need to change this. We go through this process. We change it now. Are we gonna get sued? Are we gonna lose or what? How does that work?
Well, that's a legal question. I'm sure Mike can answer.
So retail, I think that we say it was not so much to single out. You know, uh, Grafton hates retail. I think it was more to say, uh. Retail comes with customer traffic, signage displays, you know, outdoor displays, all those kind of issues.
Business.
Where, right, where. A person assembling something and shipping it out of his house. Is arguably less intense. And the neighbors, less impact on the neighbors. I think that's the drive behind. Singling out retail.
Arlene, you've had, you've been patient. You've raised your hand a couple of times. We, we've allowed other people to talk, so I, I thought I'd make sure you had a chance to say your. Sorry, I didn't mean to if, stop, cut you off, sir.
Oh, with the Grafton. Information that we have as a community member, is there something I can look at and offer suggestions? That means.
So, um, this is a change, this would, this proposal is a change to our zoning code, um, which requires a public hearing before the plan commission. Um, that's gonna be posted in the newspaper. It'll be posted in all of our posting locations around town and on our website. So you're welcome to attend the public hearing, um, and make your voice heard. If there's anything that I can provide to you as backup material that I've already collected for our team, I'm happy to provide that to you as well. So send me a note, ask for the specific things that you would like. I'll make sure you get them. And then, um, once we've set the public hearing, you're welcome to attend and make your voice heard. Thank you.
Mike, I, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have anything else?
I, I think another question that trustee Van Rue had asked was if something is, you know, law for two years and then we change it. Do we grandfather those people in or?
If there is not. You're, you were conforming at one time, you were conforming use and then you're now non-conforming and you're, and you're. You're allowed to. To continue. That's my sort of gut reaction. I mean, I could do a little digging into it, but that would be my. My reaction, as long as you can establish that. That you were established under the, under the old code. That a lot of those.
Well, if you guys are happy with the Grafton copy, I guess it's a good start. So.
So do we have a plan of action? Do we have a motion to send something to the planning commission? Or to, to legal review?
I would like to motion to send the Grafton ordinance. To the planning commission with comments about. Uh, employee restrictions. Of maximum floor usage and possibly hours of operation.
All right. We have a second?
I don't know. Right now, they don't have anything in there about hours of operation. But I mean, I know as a village, we have. Like quiet hours, so. In reality, like if you're building shirts in your basement to ship out for customers the next day and it's midnight. I mean, you shouldn't be restricted to certain hours of working, cause you're not gonna be interrupting anyone by doing that. You're just building shirts, right? But if we established hours of operation, technically if your neighbor could see in your basement window and see you building shirts in your basement, they can turn you in saying, well, you're outside of your hours of operation, so. I, I don't necessarily think somebody needs hours of operation, cause we already have a, an established. Code in the village about noise. If somebody's not interfering with their neighbors with noise. Does it matter if they're working?
We have a motion on the table to, uh. Or the Grafton ordinances to the, to review. We have a second.
Second.
DJ? Any further discussion?
I do have one more clarifying question for attorney. Um. So I, I work in regulatory compliance, that's my day job, um, certifying units and, uh. As far as grandfathering goes, and, and I know it's. Two different worlds here, so, and I'm not a lawyer and that's why I ask you. That whole government changes regulations on me all the time. And I don't get to just say, no, I've been doing it this way. Uh. Uh. How is that, how would that apply at this level versus?
I think the difference does lie in the fact that these are zoning. You know, zoning, uh, zoning codes and zoning. Restrictions and so. There's a long line of. Uh, zoning law in Wisconsin that. That would support the. That the argument for the non-conformant use and that's probably different than where you are and what you would deal on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah. I was just kinda questioning the, the whole grandfather and as they were saying, well, if we make these rules. And then change on. People that were following these rules get to still follow the rules. I don't know if that. Is necessarily true in all cases.
I should dig a little deeper into that. I'm, I'm certainly having to dig a little deeper into that question. So we know the answer to that.
That would probably be a very good thing.
We should, should.
Right.
Just a quick thought for those that were around during the chicken ordinances. That was, that was a. You were? Yeah. That was a discussion and a question that we brought up was that, okay, if we all of a sudden make chickens illegal. Does everybody have to? You know, get rid of their chickens now? And the, the argument that we got from, I think your, your counterpart was, yeah, I mean, if we make that the ro- law, that you were not allowed to have chickens anymore, well, they can't have chickens. But that might be different than like the zoning precedence that you're talking about.
Talk about the retail. So if the business had. Say an online storefront. And someone came. And was doing business at the house, you know, came to the house for whatever their service, but they didn't, but they purchased it for this storefront. Instead of handing cash in hand. Would that? Kind of fix that?
I believe the online.
Grafton's code does say that you can make online purchases and pick up at the residence.
Okay, okay.
So it does say that you can have an online store.
Put traffic from a standpoint of coming in.
Yeah, I think the, the spirit of, the spirit of that is, is disruption. You know, foot traffic, vehicle traffic. Signage, uh, you know, visual disruptions.
Okay.
Stuff like that.
Also, the, I don't wanna, I'm just a messenger, but the, the, the employee restrictions are often, are somewhat driven by the building code too. And the building code is actually quite, this is the state of the code that I'm referring to is, uh, quite restrictive. And if you have, I think you have more than one non-relative employee. More than one. You actually convert your home into sort of a, to the commercial building code. And there's, so I think some of those restrictions are driven by, by these other codes.
Where.
For residential. Right, if you build your house according to the residential code, which is, is much less restrictive.
And even occupancy, yeah, as if your employee, yeah, things like that, and that makes sense. All these other, you trip all these other codes.
So when we send it to planning commission, they'll be able to look at all that as well?
Sure, we'll, I'll share that.
So we have a motion and a second? Uh, should I call the vote? Do we have any other discussion?
We review the motion.
Yes, we can. Um, so trustee Van Rue motion to send the Grafton ordinance to the plan commission with the caveat of a maximum floor occupation. Um, the hours of operation and the employee limits to be tweaked as discussed.
Or reviewed.
Oh, sorry.
Just reviewed.
Review.
To be reviewed.
To be reviewed, to be. Okay, so you. Are you asking us to direct the plan commission to specifically look at those topics?
To review.
Them as they are? And to ask them to look at those topics specifically?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And we had a motion and a second?
And then trustee Siri seconded.
Any further discussion?
I'm not gonna vote to the one.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
I.
I. All those opposed? Abstaining? Passed. The next item, discussion and possible action on Selco wireless water tower easement agreement. Topic may necessitate a closed session discussion. Administrator Jenkins.
Sure, I'll give a quick summary of why we're here, then I'll kick it over to our attorney. Um, for those that were not on the board since last. November, I think we've been talking about this. Um, we were approached to, uh, purchase out or buy out the leases that currently are on our water tower. Um, the total of that deal that we ended up negotiating was a million dollars. Three hundred thousand of which was T-Mobile and seven hundred thousand of which was Verizon. We originally were working with just Tower Point. We originally were working with just Tower Point to negotiate for that full deal. Um, but Verizon had a stipulation in their lead current lease contract that said they have first right of refusal. If they wanna buy out their own lease, they have the right to do so. Um, and they took advantage of that. So if you remember, we closed on just T-Mobile and the three hundred thousand dollar chunk back in May, I think it was. Um, and then since then, we've been negotiating with Verizon, and I feel like we're finally there, uh, close to the finish line. And that's why our attorney is here to provide with you all of that detail.
Yeah. Consider a letter agreement written with the company called EIP Holdings. And uh, they are going to take over the Verizon antenna on top of the tower. As, as your administrator indicated. They would take an easement uh, for, to access the antenna and they'll pay you seven hundred thousand dollars for that. In addition, uh, if you remember the uh, terms of the Tower Point. The lease, the, the easement agreement is ninety-nine years, so that's a long time. So uh, there would be maintenance costs on the tower. So we, we negotiated a fifty thousand dollar payment for tower maintenance at the time you struck your uh, your deal with Tower Point. This time, uh, we've made go, and then, and then in addition, five thousand dollars of uh, reimbursement toward attorney's fees. This time, we've negotiated a seventy-five hundred dollar total payment toward. Attorney's fees and structural, structural maintenance. And the argument there is Tower Point was getting the great majority of the tower. In this case, Verizon is just taking over one antenna. So their, their duties toward the structure are. Much more restricted than, than Tower Point. So those are the payments that were negotiated. Um, uh, the, the easement agreement reads largely as it did with Tower Point. If you remember, we were negotiating for some main things. Um, access controls on the tower, uh, structural control. So if there's a new tenant after Verizon. They are supposed to give the village a structural analysis to show that their antenna won't uh, structurally impact. The tower.
Which they will pay for.
Which they would pay for, exactly. Um, and we get a chance to review. There's also relocation. If we have to do work on the tower, then they will pay uh, fifteen thousand dollars. To re, uh, up to fifteen thousand dollars of a one-time fee to relocate while you do, while you do work on the tower. Those terms are the same as we negotiated with Tower Point. Um.
Would they only do that once, or once per?
Once in the entire ninety-nine year term. Right. Right, uh, so uh, those were the main, uh, those were the main terms. They did, uh, we, the, they are identifying the village, uh, the village, the village is identifying them for any. Any issues related to the Verizon lease that would predate the time that they take over the lease. I talked to the administrator, we're not aware of any issues. Verizon hasn't made us aware of any issues, so that seemed to be a reasonable request. Uh, so the way this, the way this process would work is tonight you're asked to approve this letter agreement, which sort of sets out these terms. Um, they're gonna do Verizon or EIP is gonna do a little more due diligence. They're gonna do a title search. They're gonna maybe do some environmental on the uh, review of the tower site. And then they would close and pay you the money. They, they told me verbally, that process might take sixty to ninety days. To get to closing after tonight. Uh, but as I talked to your administrator this afternoon, um, it occurs to me, there's nothing in the agreement. That sets a deadline of sixty to ninety days, so I think our suggestion to you tonight or our recommendation is if you're willing to go forward with this. We can have a motion to approve the letter agreement, subject to uh, closing.
Losing.
By year end, which would be ninety-eight plus, really. I mean, it's, you know. And, and if we don't close by year end, then the agreement automatically terminates. And I think we have, I think we have to set a, set a reasonable deadline. That'd be my suggestion.
I would agree with that.
What happens if the tower doesn't last the ninety-nine years? Who's responsible?
Tower Point, uh, Tower Point reserve the right to uh, construct a new tower, a new monopole or a tower in the same space. But, but the question to the village would be what, what, you know, do you need a, you know, do you need another water tower there or, you know? How will you solve that problem?
That may be beneficial.
You know. I have seen water towers get decommissioned because they're old and. You know, they don't last.
Yeah, a hundred years, it's a hundred years.
Yeah, that was a, that was a.
Did Verizon agree to put a tower there?
Uh, similar terms, yes, similar terms. I think what would realistically happen is they just attach to the Tower Point. In that situation.
Can you go over eighteen B? Just kinda explain in dummy terms what it means.
Hold on. We're gonna. We're gonna each identify each other for any environmental issues. On the site, and that, I believe that term was the same as in the Tower Point agreement. We don't believe there's any, we're not aware, we have no knowledge of any environmental issues on the site. So I think the village is exposed to a ton of uh, exposure there. The greater concern would be that Verizon does something that causes an environmental issue at the site. And then they would, they would identify the village. They would cover all those costs. It's a cross, it's sort of a cross identification. Either party causes a problem. They would identify the other.
As bad as it was.
Is that just for, I don't know if environmental includes anything under the sun, but is there anything else in there that? Protects, you know, the residents, um. And the village for any sort of. Harm in any fashion?
I mean, other personal injuries up above in letter A, uh, or excuse me. Yes, I think it, I think it would, I think it would cover that.
Think of like the frequencies and different things that come out of what we're putting, what, what is up there that could harm people mentally, physically?
Somehow determined. Uh, there is a general, there is a general identification in, in paragraph seventeen, I think trustee Van Ru. That would cover those kind of, those kind of issues that uh, Verizon or EIP is giving to the village.
So essentially, if they mess up, they take care of it?
They take care of it. I should have pointed out, you're making me think now, in, in section twelve, they, they have asked for a term. That says, uh, the village won't uh, take. Uh, do any actions that would take any of their tenants from them. On the, either on the tower or within one square mile of the tower. They think they're afraid they're gonna pay us a lot of money, and then we're gonna build a monopole, you know, next door and take the tenants. So, that seemed also like a reasonable uh, request. There's language in here, they know about Tower Point, and I explained to them, you know. We can't be liable if Tower Point, you know. Takes away one of their tenants, and there's language in here where they acknowledge that.
They know that we've got a pole across the highway, don't they?
How far away is that?
Yeah, I think that's far enough, though, cause we had talked about that a while ago. Yeah. Yeah.
Last question, obviously we know what Verizon is, what is EIP and what, what are they doing? What, like, what? Who are they? What do they do? What's their point?
Yeah, it's just the real estate arm of Verizon and they uh. They handle all the, all the leasing for Verizon. I think that's how they did it.
Not sure, though.
I'm not told, I mean, uh, they're affiliated, but EIP goes around and, and they're, they're much like Tower Point. They buy these sites at random.
Yeah, they don't hold much capital.
So Tower Point has an opportunity to build a tower next to our water tower right now?
They would only have the right to build a tower if, if we uh, decommissioned or eliminated the water tower.
And we feel selling them a ninety-nine year lease is better than potentially upping their rent or continuing to charge them rent?
That was a, uh, that was sort of a conscious decision. You know, these leases, uh, it's hard to say whether these leases, uh, these buyouts are beneficial. But for last board, that was the conscious decision to, to sell the interest, and I think the thinking was, you know, what will happen in these leases? You're, you're sort of making a, a bet against time.
That's what I've been warning against, John, I'm saying.
Any further discussion? Questions? Do we have a motion?
Just to reiterate, we're looking, if, if, if you want to proceed, we're looking for a motion to approve the letter agreement.
With a stipulation that it be closed by the end of the year.
Year end or the agreement be determined.
Right.
And I can, you can, you can direct me, I'll, I'll prepare that thing.
You don't miss a trick, do you?
Well, I just, uh, yeah.
Make the, the motion.
Any further discussion?
I just wanna say, sorry.
The motion is to approve the letter agreement with Verizon. Subject to closure by the end of the year or cancellation of the agreement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Hardly.
I was just gonna thank you all for your patience. I know this has been almost a year-long journey, but as we. Don't, well, still, and I was actually gonna compliment you, Don, because as I, as I remarked in the past. When these have came before past communities, they have just blindly said yes, and you know, one meeting, took the money and went off. And I'm really proud that this board, you know, worked with attorney and staff to put in protections into this agreement. That I guarantee you, most communities don't have. So I just want, again, I wanted to thank you that, you know, again, this is, if this the direction that we're going, I'm glad that we're doing it with the. With the protections in place that, that protect the village.
Yeah, I see. To that point, the last, at the time of the Tower Point approvals. The staff and I were sort of directed to make sure that these certain large issues were covered. Indemnification, access to the tower, structural, structural analysis, when, when tenants were. Uh, attaching to the tower. So that was kind of the direction uh, the board gave, and that was what we tried to strive for.
Anything else? Then I'll put it to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I didn't get that.
I don't know.
Say nay.
Say nay. Okay, thank you.
Abstaining?
Me. I don't know what to say.
Abstaining?
Abstain?
Whoa, okay.
Alright, so it's three, two to one is what I heard.
Let me just make sure I got that all. Okay.
There's seven of us.
I'm sorry, four, four, two to one.
I was gonna say.
Sorry, I forgot about you, Pete.
Pass four, two.
Four, two, one.
Yeah.
Yep.
He was, he wasn't counting me.
So can I, can I, can I just go through that real quick, though, just to make sure I have it correctly? Um, so um, trustee Dorwer and trustee Sering um, voted nay, and um, trustee Van Ru abstained. And everybody else voted aye, yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on the purchase of parcel number zero nine zero five zero zero six two four zero zero eight. This topic may necessitate a closed session discussion. Administrator Jenkins?
I still think that this uh, necessitates closed session as we're still in active negotiations. I'd recommend you do it.
All right, uh, do we have a motion to move to closed session? I have a second. Uh, and clerk Johnson, please take a roll call vote.
President Lenz?
Aye.
Trustee Eifert?
Aye.
Trustee Frank?
Aye.
Trustee Abeglin?
Aye.
Trustee Doorworth?
Aye.
Trustee Sering?
Aye.
Trustee Van Ru.
Aye.
Alright, we're moving to closed session. Welcome back.
This is how short.
I will make a motion to approve. Offered a purchase that discussed in closed session. My, my hundred oh nine oh five oh oh six two four, what is it?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. All those abstaining, say aye abstain. Thank you. Right, the motion passes. Next item. This appears to be a repeat? Oh no, discussion and possible act, oh, is it, okay.
Just in case we had to go.
Right, we, we skipped the, alright. So we are now to item number seven, correspondence.
Um, you have two um, mid-marine documents in front of you. One is for the legislative meeting on uh, September ninth, thanks Mike. Um, and the second is for the dinner meeting on um, September twenty-fourth. Um, please let me know if you would like to attend the dinner meeting.
Alright.
Sounds pretty good.
Like to do it as long as my boss will prove good.
Okay, so if you ask.
I'll take a look and see if I can.
Yeah, I'll be going to.
You'll go to, Don? Alright, and Pete, you'll let me know.
Alright, that is the correspondence. Are there any items for future consideration?
Sell in those six lots on the northeast.
I'm saying.
Selling the six lots, the northeast lots. That, the residential lots.
What do you wanna know?
What do I wanna know?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a million dollars worth of expanding our road and utilities. That's what's stopping those lots from getting developed, so. Yeah, I mean, we're always looking for creative ways to solve that issue. Uh, we're currently working on grading for the whole lot, which. I'm happy to update you guys on, so.
I would just propose to look at possibly just getting rid of it.
To selling off those lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. I'm wishing to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're done.